I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present except Councilmember Conway, who's unable to join us this evening.
Thank you. So we have an agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Madam Mayor, we had requested the removal of item 8A, the social media policy, with the idea that we would bring that back to the council probably at your January 15 meeting.
But if we leave it on the agenda like we just did with the motion, if we have a couple of comments we want to make that will make sure are being reviewed during the interim. If we take it off the agenda, then it would be more difficult to do that.
Yeah, no, if that's the pleasure of the council, that'd be fine.
Okay.
It'll be fine.
Just a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And brings us to consent calendar. Any deletions?
We don't have that presentation.
Oh, we do. I'm sorry. Thank you for keeping me in line here. So we have a presentation from the San Mateo County Library, and Francisco Vargas is the Brisbane branch manager.
Oh, thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. My name is Francisco Vargas. I'm the newest branch manager at Brisbane. And I'm here to do our annual report. In front of you, you have the entire annual report for the entire county, and I'd just like to do some highlights with the Brisbane library in mind. Our mission is connect, discover, and evolve. And some of the highlights and achievements are that we are ranked number 12 in the nation as library system, and second in California by the Star Library Rating by the Library Journal, which is one of the best ratings, and it's peer-reviewed. So we are amazing in many respects. I'm new to the area, so I really appreciate the system, and I did my homework when I applied for the job. So it is just a very, very great library system to be part of. In Brisbane, this year, we had over 61,000 items checked out. That includes books, magazines, CDs, DVDs, just a plethora of items. We had also 44,000 library visits, and over 7,300 in attendance for programs. The whole system has over 60,000 eBooks for circulation, and this year, we added three more services, which is downloadable audiobooks, downloadable magazines, and music downloads. We also increased the broadband for the Internet in all of our computers to 1 gigabyte per second. And also, this last week, we just started loaning preloaded NOCs with five books on them. So patrons can take the NOC home for 21 days, and they can get to read five of any of the five books that are preloaded, which are popular titles that are right now in bookstores. In 2015, coming up really soon, we're going to roll out a new system called FindIt, which will take place of Dewey Decimal. FindIt is a very easy-to-use format, a lot like the bookstores use. So you'll be able to search under categories like cooking or transportation, rather than 8.11673 or anything like that. In addition, we're also going to be loaning hotspots where people can plug it into their wall or their electricity and make their whole home Wi-Fi free. And with that, we'll go a laptop as well. So those will be also for the public to check out, along with Kindle Fire HDs, which will also have books, and not just adult books, but children's books and other media. So those will be loaned out for 21 days to anyone who has a library card. Finally, I'd just like to bring up my colleague Stephanie Conrad, who is the senior librarian, who is the face of the library, and she just wants to do a few of the highlights as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I've seen a lot of you at the library or out around town. I just wanted to share that we had 92% of the children of Brisbane sign up for summer learning this year, which was the highest percentage in the entire county. So our city is awesome. And we had 456 people attend 26 different programs over the summer. We had 114 people visit the Bookmobile during the Festival of Lights last week, and we're hoping to bring the Bookmobile to more city events next year and do more outreach. Over the summer, I visited the Parks and Rec Summer Camp 15 times, and they came to the library eight times over the session. And in the spring, we're going to be starting two new book clubs, one for adults and one for kids in January, and they'll meet monthly. And then we'll also be starting a creative writing club for kids as well.
Can we ask you a question? So what age groups were all those book clubs created writing before?
The book club for adults is for any adults of any age. The one for kids, it's geared towards second through fourth grade, just by parent request. But I can accept people who are younger or older. It just sort of depends on the interest.
Great. And can you explain for people who might not know what a NOC is, what that is?
Oh, yeah. So it's like an e-reader. It's sort of like a Kindle or an iPad or something that you can read books on.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have some questions, too. So last night, I attended a Measure A workshop in Daly City, and so, if you want to come on up, too. So I was hoping you could talk a little bit about that process.
Yeah, so we have Measure A revenues, and the library director and I met recently, in fact, just a couple of days ago. And we are putting together a plan to have some of those revenues go towards a possible new library, to fund it. With those revenues, we also fund the summer learning program, and we're also going to be funding other outreach events for all ages. But a lot of programming and also capital programs. The Measure A is a nice revenue that comes in as an added, because this county is very wealthy, and so we're able to spread some of the monies to the most needed areas. The library, as it is right now, and from my own personal, just being fresh eyes, it's bursting at the seams. We have a lot of craft programs, and sometimes, we haven't had to, but we sometimes have to turn away people because we don't have enough capacity for some of the events. And hopefully, this will alleviate some of the burden on the city to have, to use some of these funds. And libraries have showed that they are a good investment on the community. They make real estate go up. In fact, we have a 3D printer, and we're looking to do a makerspace inside the library. That is my experience. I come from another library in Los Angeles where I opened up a makerspace, and it brought a lot of the community and the business. And there was a lot of entrepreneurial spirit that was engaged and electrified to see some of this new technology and 21st century skills for everyone, from the youth to the adults who want to sharpen up their skills and be able to compete for those jobs, where you have to do 3D design, and all these amazing things that are coming to us, thanks to the technology.
That is fantastic. And so, when I was at the workshop, they talked about having, if you want to take advantage of the funding cycle for the next two years, you need to have your letter of intent in by January 9. So where are we with that process?
I exchanged some emails this morning, or today, sometime today, with Anne Marie DeSpain, our county librarian, and she's going to put together a draft for our submittal, and then we'll send it to me, and then we'll take a look at that. We are also planning on bringing back to the council your January 15 city council meeting, a report back from the council subcommittee that's been working on this, that'll discuss the site, that'll discuss the building plan, which is something that the county library staff has put together for us to review, and it will also discuss the funding options for us to look at. And then subsequently, the council direction to move forward with that. I think then we have something that we can firm up our request for Measure A funds, which I believe needs to be done somewhere towards the end of February.
It's right, February 27.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's awesome. And then, you know, some cities already have received funds.
Yes.
Daly City and South San Francisco, about $500,000, correct?
Yes, that is right. Yeah, so it's a significant chunk of money.
Absolutely.
Yes, and we can put it to good use in the city. And the library is, during the recent storm, we had a small leak that came into, some water came into the library, but nothing major. But we were like one of the only places that was open, and we had children activities during that day, which was a great, it was a great response, and thanks to the staff, the frontline stuff. I want to really thank them. And they're really responsive to the community. So if a member comes in and says, hey, I'd like to learn more about this topic or that, we'll be happy to do workshops and really bring materials to the library that will fit that need.
Yeah, no, you guys have been awesome. I mean, I only hear positive feedback from folks in the community about the library. And my youngest daughter, she's taking classes, little science classes at the library, and I think those are wonderful. And those types of activities can be expanded. You know, it's such a huge benefit for the community. So, yeah, keep up the great work.
One other question, now that we have that park open behind the library, I'm curious to know how often that's been used so far. I know with the weather recently, probably people have not had an opportunity to go outside, but on warmer days, have people been?
During the summer, there was, I mean, there was people out there every day, sorry. There was people out there every day having lunch. People would come into the library, get their books, bring them outside, read the books with their kids, and have a snack. We did a few programs out there over the summer, which was great. We did some book club meetings outside, and it was really fun. I'm hoping to use that a little bit more this summer for other activities.
Yeah, excellent.
Ray, any comments?
It's great.
Welcome, Francisco, and thank you, Stephanie, for your reports. Thank you. So that brings us to oral communications, number one, and I have, I'm about to have one slip from the public. And Carolyn Moore from HIP Housing.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Moore, and I'm a resident of Brisbane, and I'm also the director of the Self-Sufficiency Program at HIP Housing. We're a nonprofit organization, and we help over 1,000 individuals every year find a place to call home through our three programs: Home Sharing, Self-Sufficiency, and Property Development. And here in the city of Brisbane, we have 12 people who are currently sharing their homes through our program, one of whom was a senior couple, and they found out about the program through the Brisbane Senior Center. And they were having trouble paying for their housing, so they wanted to get a housemate, and the housemate that they got was previously homeless. So that's the kind of win-win situation that our home sharing program can provide. We want to thank you for Brisbane, for the continued support of HIP Housing throughout the year. So I'd like to present you with our new 2015 calendar. This is the 14th calendar that HIP Housing has created, and it's filled with information about our programs, and it's children's artwork from kindergarten to fifth grade throughout San Mateo County. And each drawing is of a house and includes the child's quote about what home means to me. So thank you again for your support.
Yeah, thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Carolyn, before you go, I just want to say thank you for all the amazing work that you do and HIP Housing does. It's such a great program. Affordable housing is one of the things that is just in dire need in this county. And here we have all of this housing stock. We have a lot of folks that are just one person in a very large home. And so, you brought up that example of here is this elderly couple, they could use the income, and then you have this person who's homeless. But that person that became the roommate, that person has to go through a very elaborate screening process. And I visited your facility a few months ago, and you've got to go through quite a bit to be considered to go into someone's home. And also, HIP Housing makes sure that it's a good fit. And so, I just hope more Brisbane folks who are thinking of not only having a roommate to provide income, but also to help with maybe changing a light bulb, to sharing, going to the grocery store. Some people have mobility issues. And so that's where someone like a roommate from HIP Housing can really help out.
And sometimes, we do a work trade. So a senior who might need help with cooking or cleaning could reduce the rent for somebody who's willing to do those kinds of services, so non-medical support services. So not all of our clients are seniors, but many of them are, and they really like the fact that we do the criminal background check, we do a reference check, we meet the people and interview them so that they know that they're getting who they, somebody who they say they are, and it's not some kind of Craigslist. They feel that that's too big of a risk to take if you're a senior just to bring someone into your home. So HIP Housing provides that background checking and follow-up support if there's ever an issue. We actually call every senior household every three months to check in and make sure everything is fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who would like to speak? Seeing no hands, we will move on to the consent calendar. Any?
No one wants to remove anything? I would move approval.
I did submit some changes to the draft minutes from the October 16 meeting, and those should be before you. I'll just, for the record, say what they are.
So we want to remove item A and then deal with the rest, or how do you want to do it?
I mean, we don't have to remove it if I can just describe what those minor changes are.
I think we're removing item A, so do I have a motion to approve item B and C?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. And then, item A. Lori, you wanted to go over your changes.
Sure. So on the minutes from October 16, so the first thing is on page two regarding the King's Road improvements. I wanted to suggest adding at the end of the last paragraph, just to state what Council Member Miller had suggested putting in place in the future, that we have a program in which a homeowner who makes improvements and pays for street widening can obtain reimbursement from a benefiting property homeowner who subsequently makes improvements in the absence of a reimbursement agreement. That was, according to my notes, what he had suggested, just to specify that. And then, on page three, regarding the skate park, during the council member discussion, and actually following the discussion, I believe included in that the motion was to approve it at the existing location, and I added with potential expansion into the basketball court and toward the sidewalk. And that was also in the staff report. Those were my changes.
I have no problems with those changes. With the changes in place, do I have any other?
Could I just make one clarification on the, since Karen is here, I can confirm. If we expand in some of the area that's currently the basketball court, that's one of the designs we're going to be looking at. It doesn't reduce the size of the basketball court, it just moves it over. So the way it's written here, it looks as if it gets expanded in the basketball court, and it might be reduced in size. And that will not be the case if we take that option.
Okay, then I misunderstood at that meeting because I thought it was to look at the existing location, which was the site of the skate park plus the adjacent basketball court.
But the idea would be if you were to expand the size of the current skate park, then we'd have to move the basketball court. But we wouldn't reduce it in size, it would just be moved because there's a considerable amount of space between the current basketball court and the street, and it would be moved into that space. That's one of the options, anyway. Am I right about that?
Maybe staff can clarify what.
Am I right about that?
That's correct. And that space is like 22 feet wide on Park Place.
Right.
The west end of that property.
Right. So I just don't want anybody to get the idea that we're going to reduce the basketball court size because we don't want to do that either.
And how would you like, if we're adding this wording into the agenda, how would you like to add some wording that would change that to reflect without, with potential expansion into the basketball court without removing the court?
With potential expansion without reducing the size of the basketball court. How's that?
Yeah, that sounds accurate, yes.
So with those two changes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of Thursday, October 16?
So moved.
Second? Not hearing a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that moves us on to Old Business, and it's a report from the Economic Development Workshop. And who is giving that report?
Oh, we want to start, well, I'm sure, we start with you, Clay, and then?
Yeah, just, and I probably should have said something earlier, but I'm just wondering, I noticed that there are several members of the Complete Streets Committee in the audience tonight, if you wanted to move their item up in front of this, because I suspect we'll take a little time of it.
Absolutely. I would be in favor of it.
Yeah, me, too.
I think that's fine. So we will move item, sorry?
B, under New Business.
Item B to the first item of business under New Business, or before, the first item in front of Old Business. Do we need to make a motion to do that, or can we just do that?
I think as mayor, you can just do that.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. So then we will move on to New Business. Item B, considered recommendation of the Complete Streets Safety Committee's plan regarding the safe pedestrian routes to school. Then we will have, that will be staff report.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, the Complete Streets Safety Committee formed and began meeting in the spring of last year. There'd been some changes in membership over that time, so progress kind of moved along. We wanted to make sure that everyone supported what we were doing, so there was some repeats of effort, but there's been a lot of work that's gone into what we've come up with as this first shot at safe pedestrian routes to schools. We kind of had to pick an area and limit it, so we didn't necessarily touch everything within the limits of the city of Brisbane because there's just a lot there. And so we looked primarily at the two schools, Brisbane Elementary School and Littman Middle School, and how children travel to those routes. We also did study children that go out of town to schools and use buses, and we think there is a second phase that can happen with this and more that we can do beyond this scope. But we wanted to, we kept thinking about the next area and the next area, and we wanted to just finish something and bring it to you and talk about it. So as such, I would like to go through, I think, the PowerPoint presentation to kind of explain what we came up with. When we considered safe routes, we thought about pedestrian safety. We also, you can't look at pedestrian safety without also looking at vehicular traffic, and again, how students traveled to schools within and without the city of Brisbane. And so, due to Brisbane's topography, we kind of did limit and chose some streets based on that, limited to the area, limited our study to the area that's shown on Attachment A. So within this area, Littman School and BES, we tried to work with the routes that children do travel now, we tried to work with the safest crossings, we tried to work with streets and intersections that had the least conflicts existing. And in some cases, that meant that kids may not be able to travel on both sides of the street in some cases. And to be able to have this route that you see before you, there are a number of infrastructure changes that we're suggesting. We're also suggesting 15 mile-per-hour speed limits in school zones. That's allowed by the California Vehicle Code, and I don't know if you want to speak to that. Bob could speak to that if we needed more detail this time. We kind of, we chose, the limit is 500 feet from a school, so I think we kind of included everything in that area that made sense. And so we're proposing 15 mile-per-hour zones as shown on this map. And so we're proposing 15 mile per hour zones as shown on this map. And this is just a sample of the type of signage that would be used. So it would require more signs. There'd be a begin 15 mile per hour zone and 15 mile per hour zone. And it's, this is in effect when children are present, so it just doesn't have to be during school hours. It can be if an event happens at a school and children are leaving, coming or leaving that event. So, the infrastructure improvements that we're talking about, this would be the first one, at San Bruno Avenue, is that we felt that there were some safety concerns crossing, getting to BES in this area. And we felt that coming downhill from San Bruno, that there wasn't a lot of time to see that uphill crosswalk and to see if a child was in that crosswalk. So we're suggesting moving it to the downhill side. And we found that it had to be angled because there's a driveway directly perpendicular, and there's also kind of a large, there's a large catch basin and a tall curb at the school side, the school corner of that intersection. And this would allow us to bring kids into the existing ADA ramp that's at that corner. So we want to move that crosswalk and remove the one on the uphill side. We also, in this, we need to take out a tree on the east side of the street. And they're just, if we move the sidewalk downhill from that tree, then anyone wanting to cross would be obstructed by that tree, so we just didn't see any way around that. We're also, as shown in this diagram, considering or offering the option to extend the white zone for drop-offs along Glen Parkway. I don't know if, I know there were some questions from Councilmember Lou, and if they, I can fold them in here. There was a question about how that would be worked, how that would be worked in and what hours. We, what we observed was that that's not heavily used in the daytime. There are a couple cars parked there, but there's generally space on that block of Glen Parkway, and that we could just have that drop-off zone be during the hours needed at school, and it wouldn't impact other people that park there too significantly. A lot of this data, I do want to point out, a lot of this data was collected from the Complete Streets Committee members. They were just like immeasurably helpful to staff in going out and observing the drop-offs in the morning and the pickups in the afternoon, like multiple times, and walking the routes. Week after week, each meeting, they had new information to bring about what was, what was going on. So, you know, this couldn't have come together without all of their help. Next location, San Francisco at Solano, there's concern about that uncontrolled crossing at the top of San Francisco Avenue, and that's on our safe route, despite the fact that we have steps going down San Francisco Avenue. That's the way children travel that are going to the community park or to that side of town. That's the way they walk. So we're proposing an eight, a raised crosswalk, and that's similar to, we all talked about what that was at our meetings. It's similar to what was put in in San Francisco right off of Caesar Chavez that kind of makes, in that case, it appears more like a driveway than a street. And it's, it's a fabricated crosswalk that can be embedded, attached to the pavement, so it could be plastic. It could be built without asphalt, it could be plastic, but it's basically kind of a ramped up elevated crosswalk that you can't go over at the regular 25 miles per hour speed. You've got to slow down to be comfortable. And we said emergency vehicle cutouts, that would be along the center and spaced for a fire engine or a police car. So a driver would have to drive down the middle of the street to pass through the cutouts and not drive over the raised crosswalk as it was intended. And we want that just to not prohibit, anything that you put in the street like that that prohibits emergency response is not favored for that reason, so this was the compromise that we're proposing. And we're proposing bots dots on the exit from Littman School, and that's because it's curved there. And the concern was that people coming out of Littman and coming around that curve don't have enough time to see someone in the crosswalk. Whereas from the other direction, you're coming straight on and you would see someone in the crosswalk. The next location, Humboldt and Solano, so this is part of our safe routes to school. The kids that go to the west side of town or go to the library traveled down Solano Street and across Solano Street and down Monterey in some cases. We were originally just trying to get kids to this intersection and down Monterey, but then we decided to go further down the block and connect with Bicentennial Walkway. We thought that was advantageous. So, one of the things we're talking about, high visibility crosswalks on three legs. So, we're encouraging kids to walk on those three legs of the intersection. So what's shown are the high visibility crosswalks, they're also called ladder style. And a normal crosswalk would just be the two one-foot-wide white lines that delineate, demarcate the outside of the crosswalk, and the high visibility is just, as it's called, much more noticeable to a driver. They can be yellow within a school zone, and they need to be white when they're not inside a school zone. So we would put those in, and they would be yellow. We want to put in ramps at the three, where there aren't ramps, at the three legs of that intersection. It's probably difficult to meet the ADA standard completely in a couple of those locations because it's pretty steep, but we still want to have a ramp. In some cases, we considered stroller passability because you can't build everything to the flat land standard of ADA access and width and all of that with what the existing constraints that we have. So those ramps particularly don't say that they're ADA because you can't make them connect down Monterey Street at 8 percent. There's just not physically room to do that. We talked about installing a larger island. That island actually would increase in size to provide a little refuge, but it would be towards the Solano free right turn uphill onto Humboldt, so it wouldn't impact traffic coming downhill on Humboldt, either going straight or turning right. And it would, the cutouts then kind of provide pedestrian, well, passage, ADA or stroller passage, and kind of a refuge if they need it. And this is further down on Solano Street where we are connecting with the Bicentennial Walkway. The situation there is that the curb on the, the white line on the downhill side is so close to the edge of pavement that cars park to be inside of the white line. They park up on the sidewalk and pretty much largely completely block the sidewalk. They park over the brick line that generally in other places demarcates where cars can park because of the white line. So we want to shift that all uphill, so we're going to move the white line on the downhill side into the roadway afoot and allow the cars to park on the brick between the white line and the brick and have enough passage for pedestrians to cross on that downhill side sidewalk. And rather than reduce the width of the roadway, we do allow a minimum of 12 feet, but we want to maximize that roadway width because that 12 is a, you know, a tight number. We don't want to get down there if we don't have to. We want to move the white line on the uphill side one foot in towards the properties. Now, on that uphill side, those, there isn't really a sidewalk. It's almost all driveway. And they're a bit steep, and people are kind of parking in front of their driveways anyway, so this would make them park a little bit closer by a foot and may not, you know, it will impact them, but it still gives them space. It doesn't, we had first looked at cramming them all the way up to the gutter line, and this doesn't do that. At the top of the slide, we say, move the west side white line out to the gutter for the first 20 feet to create space for passing. I don't think that's worded quite right. It doesn't create space for passing. Well, it does. It creates a refuge, so if you are coming down Solano from the top heading westbound, or if that's southbound, yes, I guess it's southbound, you could pull over if a car was coming in the other direction, given that the roadway width is only 14 feet wide. So it's similar to what we do, we've done downhill on Monterey Street at Humboldt. We've painted a red curb so that there's a place to pull over if someone's coming uphill and two cars don't meet up and not have room to allow each other to pass. So that's what that was intended to do. At San Benito and Glen Parkway, we just, so we've already done some, we already put in a high visibility crossing, ladder crosswalk on Glen Parkway. We wanted to add an ADA compliant ramp that, that wasn't put in at the time. Kind of the end of the sidewalk where you get a kind of a dirt shoulder there, but it is still a crosswalk to the school. And we wanted to allow pedestrians to be able to travel all the way down that west side of Glen Parkway. And that would require, there's a utility pole blocking the walkway, and will require the school to move their fence that's on our property so that we can widen the sidewalk where that utility pole exists.
Karen, since you have that slide up, yeah, that one. I'm curious why there isn't the high visibility, high visibility crosswalk at that intersection.
On San Benito?
Yeah, heading, heading towards the school.
We looked at that. It's, it's a funky one with that driveway coming in at the same point.
Sure.
Because that, that might possibly be their property there. And we could definitely investigate that. I don't, we could at least, maybe with our agreement, put it all the way to the other sidewalk.
Okay.
I think the grades change a little bit too, but, but we could definitely look at doing something like that. I mean, that's a good point because the high visibility want to be in the neighborhood of schools and where kids are.
Especially going into the school, sure.
I'm sorry, Cliff, will you give an explanation where you're talking about, because I didn't...
Oh, okay, so where it says install ADA compliant ramp? So, then having a high visibility crosswalk from that ramp to the school. So connecting the two, the two ramps.
Okay, so you're talking about where, where the marking is for San Benito Road just to the lower portion and going across to the corner?
So you see like in that, where that, you know, that the bottom of the V?
Right.
There's an ADA ramp, and so, yeah, and then having a high visibility crosswalk connecting to the proposed ADA ramp.
Okay.
And what about going across Glen Parkway? Because cars can go down that hill pretty fast, or did, I mean, you're suggesting only from across San Benito? But what about the...
It seems like there's, oh, they have the high visibility, high visibility crosswalk already at Glen Park, or would this not be considered high visibility this way?
There's one that exists there just south of San Benito.
Yeah.
That's high visibility?
Mm-hmm. And it has ADA ramps on either side, and it has advanced warning signs for pedestrian, school crossing. This one was tricky, Visitation at Alvarado Street. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. It's kind of a big, wide, open intersection. We first were trying to keep pedestrians on the east side of the street, and we just couldn't get them through some of these areas. The grades were funky and some obstructions were there. Then we asked the committee if we could actually not even use Alvarado and make kids go down to Klamath, and they gave us the feedback that, no, that kids aren't going to go a block out of the way. They're going to do it anyways. We've got to make this work. So what we came up with was putting a crosswalk across what is Alvarado Street to the west. And when you walk up Visitation on that west side, the walkway is clear, so that's fine. And actually, we had trouble back crossing people at Visitation Klamath. That was really difficult to make work with the midtown, that island that's there, or the Hilltop. What was the Hilltop Market in that island? That was a difficult crossing to make. So we're bringing them up on the west side of Visitation, and then we want to trim some landscaping. So that's between the sidewalk and the street. It's in the right of way, but it's above what would be a child's height, and it might obscure them. And then we need to take some out so that they can get from the sidewalk over into this crosswalk that we're creating. So we're painting a crosswalk, but within the already chevroned area, we wanted to put in a six-inch curb that is just kind of a demarcation and a protection when kids are out there in the middle of that big intersection, or any pedestrians trying to cross over, either go further up Visitation or to go down Alvarado. So that was the intent of that, and they would then cross, they could cross to, like I said, to continue to go up Visitation or turn and go across Visitation to the downhill side of Alvarado. Needs a little work right where they come in.
So why did you decide to have it go back towards the downhill side? Because if they're coming up the hill, they might want to cross to the uphill side of Alvarado at the bottom right of the corner of the screen?
No sidewalk on Alvarado. No sidewalk on the uphill side of Alvarado at that end.
Okay.
And, and the, going up Visitation, the west-hand side?
Mm-hmm. Yes, so Madhouse Coffee and then going up from there.
Okay, so on the, on the side where the church is?
Yes.
Would be the side they'd be walking up, and then cross over to Madhouse and then, or cross before Madhouse?
No, no, go up the next block to Alvarado, so go back to the overall map. They can come up Visitation either, either side. They can cross Klamath on the lower side, but then to get up higher, it's safer to stay on that west side of Visitation. So if you're on the east side of Visitation and you wanted to get up there, yeah, in that case, you kind of have to, have to cross west and then go up and back east. That's not perfect, but safer.
Yeah, me either. I think the issue of Klamath versus Alvarado is kind of an interesting one. And when you all have your comment, and I'm sure the members of the committee will too, but you're right that the kids do walk on Alvarado, but it's not a safe street. On the, what would be the west side, I guess, which is the uphill side, you know, there's, until you get to the school, there's virtually no sidewalks. And people really, the only place they park is on the driveways. So on that side of the street, it's hopeless most of the distance. And on the left-hand side, there's, for the east side, there's downhill side. Sidewalks here and there, but again, mostly blocked a good part of the time. So the reason I'm thinking about Alvarado Street is that there was a very old-time Brisbane couple called the Radoffs, George and Dorothy Radoff, and they lived on Alvarado Street after they were moved out of Eldorado by the school district. And I remember George, his campaign his whole life was very much concerned about the danger to kids walking on Alvarado for two reasons. One, they're mostly forced to walk in the street. And two, it's a long, straight thoroughfare, and some cars really go fast along there. And so it's hard for me to imagine how we make Alvarado a safe street. And I know that the committee members have given a lot of thought to this and why they, you know, and it's true, the kids are going to probably go there anyway, but at least it seems to me that there's the greater likelihood of Klamath anyway having, you know, sidewalks. Whereas Alvarado, it's pretty much of a lost cause. And, you know, Klamath has the speed bumps, but not Alvarado. Anyway, I'd be interested in the conversation about that.
Yeah, actually, also, like you said, more cars do go down Alvarado. I know when I used to live on Sierra Point, sometimes if I'd come down that street, what is it? Is that San Benito? The one that comes down from Sierra Point? That's how you would turn right if you wanted to go out the backside of San Bruno Avenue. So did you consider the amount of vehicular traffic on Alvarado versus Klamath?
No, I don't think we did any, we didn't do any traffic counts. It was primarily that the parents that gave input said they didn't think that the kids walking to school would go out of their way to come back up. out of their way to come back up to BES. And we did think that we could, with trimming back any hedges or landscaping that's overgrown, get three feet of clear on that, on that downhill side. So that probably does involve getting cars that have traditionally blocked to move. I don't remember specifically, do you? On Alvarado?
Cars blocking? We've worked campaigns over time.
Yeah, regarding the cars blocking the sidewalks in Alvarado, that's been an ongoing issue for for us. And we've done education and enforcement campaigns in the past. In fact, back in thirteen, when the Safe Streets Committee got together, we we actually kind of did a preemptive strike there, knowing that that was going to be one of the issue areas. And to kind of reiterate what Karen was saying, you know, really can, none of this would be here without the extra effort from the committee members. They spent hours and hours in the community doing firsthand observations as well as talking to members of the community and mothers of Brisbane. And as certainly on a map and, you know, looking at it from that point of view, Klamath would be a great place to designate the safe route. However, you know, what we put on the map is not really what we're here to do. It's it's making what people use, what people want to use, the safest route. So we can certainly add that, but I don't think it takes away from from the issues that, for whatever reason, people want to and are going to use Alvarado Street. So we're committed to finding a solution for those people. And and that's where we are with this intersection of Visitation and Alvarado. And then we also talk about later the issue of ongoing programs for keeping the sidewalks clear through the education enforcement. That's that's how we got to this point.
So if I may, through the mayor. So Bob, so and Karen, so on Alvarado Street, you know, I I've I've walked that street lots of times, you know. Can't help but walk a lot of the streets in town if you've lived here long enough. So how much of Alvarado does have sidewalk?
The entire downhill side has a sidewalk.
Okay.
A majority, like Councilmember Miller stated, the uphill side does not until you get down to the last block.
Okay.
There there's a couple of other obstructions on the downhill side that we address later in in the, in the document in order, in terms of telephone poles and whatnot. But we feel we can mitigate those as well and and keep that area relatively clear most of the time.
Okay. And then, you know, looking at your map here, that's where you have the route. It's on the downhill side of Alvarado. You know, I noticed that there wasn't a crosswalk that that went to the the Alvarado entry into the school. And I was kind of curious about that, why maybe, you know, not connecting this route then with that entrance, entranceway into the school from the backside.
I think it, because of the hazards of the uphill side, it just was going to be problematic to to include it in the route.
You know, the kids are going to go up there. I mean, they're not going to go to the corner of San Bruno and then make a right turn and come into school. They're going to cut through.
We can look at that, yeah. I mean, I don't I don't think we really had any extensive discussion about that, so.
All right. Well, yeah, it's just something to, you know, to look at. You know, with that downhill portion of of Alvarado having sidewalk and then your recommendations for, you know, trying to work with property owners to say, hey, this is, this is an important issue. We need to make sure that our kids are safe when they go to school. You know, safety comes first and we just have to work with the members of 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 the community that live on Alvarado to to accommodate. I think it's just working together. But, you know, I like what you've suggested. And, you know, and going back to attachment I. You know, I I I think this is really great. I mean, this is a, this is a tough intersection. There's a lot of stuff going on. And what you're trying to do here is to to make it safe, not just for for the kids going to school, but for everybody else. And then, you know, you look at this and you go, well, you know, you could usually do something more than just make it safe. You could make it really attractive. You know, some of the, the water, low water use plants that that San Francisco has been installing in some of their medians. And so then it's like, well, you know, maybe we could make this a lot nicer. And, you know, instead of having this, this white triangle, you know, that that area could also be planted. If that is, you know, something that that would be still, you know, safe for cars to to move in and out of. But just, you know, making it more attractive.
Yeah.
I know that's out of your purview for being, you know, safe streets. But, you know, I I, you know, if you're going to do this or if we're going to decide to do this, you know, I I think it would be nice to to also beautify the area as well.
That would definitely make it more attractive than having that big asphalt area that's not used in the middle there.
Exactly, yes.
As long as the emergency vehicles and.
Yeah, I know.
And it's something that we don't need the the turning radius for, for large vehicles?
Yeah, yeah. Well, it seems like there's enough space there to be able to do something. And then, you know, if you had something that was planted, it also calls out for awareness too that, okay, I'm not supposed to like cut this street right in the middle and, and, yeah. So to me, I I I think it also acts as a, as a safety measure as well.
Okay. Next sheet is San Francisco Denio. This is pretty minor, but we did observe that kids traveled, like I said before, down San Francisco to get to the live, to, sorry, the community park in that end of town. And it's just a utility pole and a fire hydrant right just smack in the middle of the sidewalk there. So we want to put a little concrete path behind that. It's, there's a kind of a decomposed granite path there now to get people around those obstructions. But we just want to make it concrete and passable by strollers and wheelchairs and whatnot. So that's all that that is suggesting. And this, this slide kind of works in with the issues that we saw at the drop off at BES. And probably everyone's familiar with how crazy it gets on San Bruno Avenue at eight, an eight, ten in the morning. One of the things that committee members observed is that when the shuttle bus comes through and it, it pulls over if it can, if there's not a car parked there, then cars will double park in the street around it. Or sometimes the shuttle is double parking in the street. And other people coming uphill on San Bruno will go over the double yellow line to pass going uphill. And there's just all kinds of danger to kids that are trying to cross and get to school. So we came up with the idea and Maria, Sid and I met with the Alliance and looked at moving the shuttle stop just down the block. So it's still on, it's labeled as on the south side of Alvarado because that, that uphill side of the Alvarado San Bro- San Bruno intersection is the south side. So we just want to move it to the other end of the block. And we wanted to make that length that they need, that thirty feet or so, no parking for just a couple of hours in the morning so that that shuttle isn't in conflict with what else is happening with the school drop offs. And it's still far enough away from the one downhill. It's still well positioned between the one downhill, the stop further down and further up. And that would, on Alliance's end, is simply a matter of letting them know when we put the infrastructure in so that they can notify people about the movement of the stop. Along, now that we're at BES, we should talk about some of the school issues. We saw, as I'd mentioned, a number of challenges with the drop off, a lot less. So with the pickup, I guess, because parents pick up kids at different times of the day, some are in after school programs. Maybe some of them do walk home at the end of the school day. And we've observed that there could be improvements to just the congestion there and that some parents drop off their kids on, they're coming down the hill, so they drop off their kids on the opposite side of the street. And they're making U-turns in the middle of the block and kids are jaywalking and just a whole bunch of chaos there. And we thought it would be ideal that the back parking lot, since it's a circle, be used for drop offs. Now, it is faculty parking now, but we were thinking that it would be possible that they could have faculty parking along Glen Parkway during the daytime. We didn't want to, we had a lot of ideas for what the school could do in terms of having parents edu- be educated each year send a note home that they have to be, that they have to sign about how to drop kids off and and that they start a student crossing guard program. But we didn't make any particular outreach to the school because we didn't want to do that without talking to council and that perhaps that it would be someone from the council that would actually even do that. But we definitely see ways that that could be safer. We even had ideas at Lippman that they use more of their area to drop off and turn around and and eliminate the chaos that they have up there. So kind of want to hear where the council is on that, on those concepts in terms of making sidewalks safer and the ways that kids would get to school safer.
Karen, I think you missed one slide, attachment K. We didn't discuss the Sierra Point Road, Klamath Street intersection.
Looks like it is, got left out of my, yeah.
Here, what the, do you have it?
I don't have it. Oh, you have it. If anyone else needs to see it, we have a couple of copies. Thank you. It's Sierra Point Road at Klamath Street. That was also when we decided to extend Solano Street to Bicentennial Walkway. We thought, why not make it as safe as possible all the way to Upper Bicentennial Walkway? There are people that use that to get down into the center of town. And we wanted to have signs that identify where each part of the walkway begins and ends. And we wanted to install this high visibility ladder style crosswalk. And that's because this is an uncontrolled intersection or you're not required to stop. So we wanted people to make drivers to definitely notice that there could be a pedestrian crossing there. So that's kind of the, most of what that slide was about.
As a comment on that, it seems to me, I I live on Sierra Point Road and just as it sort of levels out and before it comes to a stop at Humboldt, it it seems that that's a through street for UPS, FedEx and a lot of people driving through town. That street tends to get a lot of high, high speed traffic. And the intersection, particularly at Klamath and Sierra Point, is something that, I mean, I hear and see people speeding through. And I think it's a dangerous intersection for vehicles, much less for people walking at that intersection because people are are coming and can go either left or right without stopping. And I wonder if, if when you are looking at this, a stop sign or any kind of speed control along Sierra Point has been, was considered?
We didn't talk about more than what we showed when we met. Warrant wise, you're really not supposed to use stop signs for speed control. You're supposed to have a certain number of traffic, a certain amount of traffic on the major street and a certain amount on the minor street or a certain amount of pedestrians that are having difficulty getting through. So, but there are other ways to bring attention to the traffic. And, you know, it could be, there's a lot of traffic calming measures out there. And what, some of these intersections where we didn't necessarily inundate an intersection with traffic calming measures. We talked about all of the ones that are available, but we also talked about phasing in pieces. You do something and then if that does, people get used to it and they start to ignore it. And then you can add a flashing beacon later or bots dots or, some neighbors don't like bots dots because they make noise. But this could be a case that maybe a raised crosswalk would be more effective than just a painted crosswalk.
I think Terry Reese is a good point though, that when you're driving, I mean, I've had this experience driving up Klamath. And I just don't know when I get to the intersection, if the people are going to be stopping, driving down Sierra Point, going north. Because there's no stop signs anywhere on the intersection. And it's a pretty blind right turn from Klamath onto Sierra Point. So I think it really is a vehicular, you know, concern for cars and for pedestrians, especially if this is considered one of the safe routes. So.
Well, I I don't think that it's, you know, I I don't want to try to rework the plan, but I I see a lot of of high speed traffic throughout the day along Sierra Point. Part of that is because I live there, so I see it. And I don't want to call special attention to my area because it it's something I see. The other, going back to your attachment E on San Francisco and Solano. To me, the the traffic coming up Mariposa at the really steep grade, it's taking a right hand turn. I walk that way a lot, going down to the walkway that takes you to the community garden. And I know a lot of the kids walk that way. And the traffic coming uphill and making that immediate right does not slow down. And that was one of the intersections that I thought would have some sort of control on. And I know it's, it's difficult because of the extreme slope or the uphill traffic. I think it'd be difficult for people to stop. But did we, did you consider that or did the committee consider that intersection?
Well, we don't have pedestrians on that side and we particularly didn't cross them on Solano at Mariposa on that downhill side because of that and and also because it's so steep that it's like a rolled, that crosswalk is on a rolled slope. So we don't have pedestrians over there, but I definitely know what, you know, I'm aware of what you're talking about. There could be more warning on Solano. Something, I'm not sure that, you know, that there were planned, there were ideas of making those two streets one way at some point. I don't think that, I don't know how far that that went. There were some of those neighbors that weren't too in favor of doing that, but making Mariposa only one way down and Monterey only one way up. But there's, you know, we could look at that more and see if we had other traffic calming ideas there, both of these.
Well, it seems to me that because the safe route goes down the stairs past the community garden, that that might alleviate the concern. If if people want to go in that direction, if they want to keep continuing down Solano, then they're directed towards Monterey. So they they wouldn't be turning down Mariposa at all and they would be on the opposite side of the street on Solano. So.
The kids wouldn't be, but the cars are.
So it's still a car versus car kind of challenging.
It's more of a car versus car than a pedestrian. And and so that's why I just brought it up because that's where I probably, the other intersection that I see a lot of issues. And I know that when you asked about the school using Glen Park to park their, their staff parking and using their parking lot as a turnaround or a drop off point. I know that there was a program, I believe in Foster City, that used CCAG funds, a safe route to school parking lot revamp. And they, it it was quite an expensive project. But it did get CCAG funds to redo the drop off and pickup area and do a green parking lot kind of complete revamp. And I was surprised at, at the cost. I want to say it was about a half a million dollars project that was funded by CCAG for the school district. And so that is a, a possibility if we get to that point to approach that group for funding if the school district was amiable to it. if the school district was amiable to it. And I don't know how much traffic that would, parking it would impact for residents on Glen Park either. So had, did your study look at how many displaced vehicles that this would cause issues?
Really minimally displaced vehicles. We almost had, originally we had eliminated a block's worth of parking on Solano. And we were able to make that work and, and not have that happen. So no one's, I don't think anyone's eliminated 24 hours a day. There's the shuttle and the ideas at the school would be during the hours that we need them. But I don't think otherwise, in this plan, we've eliminated parking. We, we did have conversations about pulling parking away from intersections so that there's more visibility in turns, but we didn't put that in this phase. And that might end up eliminating parking. It just gets very sensitive and so we wanted to.
Very sensitive.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions for staff before we hear from the committee?
I do. I, so I had submitted, I had submitted a bunch of questions to staff and you've answered quite a bit of them, but few remaining. So these ceramic medallions that are going to demarcate the safe routes, what do they look like? And how, what kind of signage would there be to explain to people and notify them that this is a safe route?
Right. So we'd want to do a few steps. We would want to have a few signs with the maps of the area. And we'd, we'd also do education and outreach so everybody was familiar that this was a, a program and that we'd made infrastructure changes and that these were designated safe routes. But the medallions themselves have been used in other agencies. I don't remember if they've been particularly used for safe routes, but they're for nature walks and that type of thing. And our thought process was that is, this is primarily for kids. It's for all pedestrians. They're looking at the sidewalk, not up at signs. So we're talking about, it could be like the flows to bay. Those aren't actually ceramic. They're like in a, a rubber that's glued on with epoxy at the catch basins. But it was, we had in mind a round medallion in the sidewalk, two or three per block. And, and where it turns, affixed to the sidewalk. So as kids are walking, they would see where the route was.
Okay. So it wouldn't necessarily be visible to drivers. It's more for the pedestrians themselves to follow the dots.
Yeah. So the drivers, it would be through education and through some signs and mailings and the website and that information.
And I wonder if we can, you know, if you put something on the website, maybe put it in a form that if they, a middle school student has like an iPhone or, you know, a smartphone, they can pull it up. But just to, you know, if they're new at the route, they want to figure out where they are in relation to the town. I think that would be helpful as well.
Oh, oh.
We can even make an app.
We're hoping to make it safe enough that drivers are still going to drive on these streets, but pedestrians are safe being on the streets with the drivers.
Okay. Thank you.
A, a follow up for that. I'd rather them looking at where they're going instead of watching a phone.
No, no, I, I'm not suggesting that. But just if they need a reference point.
Oh, do you have any more, Laura?
I did, but you can, okay. I guess I'll finish my list. Let's see. So I think you had answered my question. I had asked, how is the high visibility crosswalk regu- different from a regular? Actually, maybe I'll ask this. I don't think you have answered. How is a high visibility crosswalk different from a raised crosswalk?
So the raised crosswalk typically is marked like a high visibility crosswalk with the ladder style markings, but it's a, an element that's affixed on top of the pavement and changes the grade as you go over it. Whereas a high visibility is just the thermoplastic ladder design.
And does the hi, does the raised crosswalk cause the cars to, to slow down? What, what speed would they typically have to go at to get over that safely?
I don't know if I know that number, but if I had to make an educated guess, I think it's more like 15 miles per hour.
Okay. And at the intersection of Visitation and Alvarado, you had suggested that, that island would be painted. So would that one be raised or elevated at all?
It's the painted island that we were just talking about here. It's already painted. And our proposal with the curb was, we're, we're trying to not make this too expensive. So there's more you could do. You could put a raised sidewalk there. You could protect pedestrians a lot of different ways. But kind of the cheapest solution would be to put curb on either side and just protect them as they pass through that, middle of that intersection.
So what happens when a car is coming down, is it Alvarado on the other side or is that a mono street? If they're coming, I think it's mono on that side. If they want to make a left turn, will they still be able to do that?
Mm-hmm. They would have to go up as they normally do to Visitation and make that left turn.
And go around the, the painted triangle. And the same thing for the intersection of Solano and Humboldt and Monterey, because you suggested enlarging that island or, right. So if a car is coming down Humboldt, making left on Solano, would they go, would there be enough space for them to go around the island?
Yes. So we'd only want to widen the island that, that isn't clear in this attachment. You're correct. Widen it back towards Solano. That's 20 something feet from the back of that island to Solano. And at the size that it is, there's not enough room to, to cut out a pedestrian walkway through the middle of it because it's only about four or five feet long. So we're just kind of making more space to have a cutout and have protection around it without, and it's back only on that free right from Solano uphill to Humboldt, which is, like I said, about 22 feet wide there.
Right. Okay. And going back to BES at the San, San Bruno Avenue, where you talked about having the, the parking for the shuttle be moved south on that attachment. I think it says move south of Alvarado. And I'm wondering if that's supposed to say south towards Alvarado? Because you, you still want it, you see at the bottom, it says, move the shuttle stop to south of Alvarado intersection. But south of Alvarado would be not what that picture is showing. That circle is actually, or is that south?
It is south.
It is south. Okay.
It's very counterintuitive.
It moves it north. Move it south, but, okay.
Move it north to just south of Alvarado.
That's what we should have said.
Okay, thank you.
A little unclearness in those.
Okay. And that would only be during?
No, the shuttle stop, shuttle stop would be there all the time. But it's, we would not allow parking from seven to nine AM.
Okay. And what about pickup hours? Is there a certain time when more students are getting out? Or did you only look at morning drop offs?
No, we looked at all of the times, but like I'd said, that the pickup is just not anywhere near as congested. Some kids stay in an after school program. Some kids maybe walk home. But it just is, there's, the level of chaos is so much reduced that it wasn't the same as problem.
And in the, with the parking lot around the other side of BES, off of Glen Park, you said that, that's reserved for faculty parking. So are, are cars not allowed to go in there and drop off kids and is it not used for that purpose at all at, at this point?
That's a good question. I don't know how many people might try it. It's probably not convenient for a number of people or it's slightly less convenient. I am told that there are, there's a, a bus that has ADA access that drops off back there. Is that right? I think there's a minimal amount of drop off, but there is traffic there with faculty parking, you know, that probably wouldn't allow both to happen together very safely.
Okay. Why would be interested in, you know, pursuing that and potentially talking with the school district? And then with some respect to the community involvement and issuing of citations, what is the, the dollar amount that someone would get for parking on a sidewalk blocking a safe route? And is that increased because it's, because it's a safe route?
The fine for a parking citation is $30 for that. It's in the universal bail code. This is a vehicle code violation. We did talk about the prospective increasing fines in those areas, but we decided not to do it in this phase of, of the program. It would require council to actually enact an ordinance specifically allowing us to raise the bail for, for that amount.
So it's $30 regardless of if it's a safe route, but just parking in a, blocking a sidewalk?
That's correct.
Okay. And the staff report also mentioned the safety crossing guard program. It's an interesting idea. I'm wondering if, if you considered any liability issues about, you know, say you have some volunteer students helping people cross the street. Did you, what happens if, you know, there's some sort of pedestrian accident and either a pedestrian or the crossing guard gets hurt? Do you consider any of those issues?
Those programs are suggestions that we would want to have a dialogue with the school about. They wouldn't be administered by us or by the city. So that would be part of the discussion with the schools. I mean, there, there have been programs in the past that, that use students. We just thought it would be a great way to, to involve the community. But those would be items for discussion as we move forward to see if the school was interested in, in doing that. And we'd be willing to work with them on that initially, but it would be administered by the school or by the parents.
Okay. And do you have any sense of what the cost would be for these improvements and what sort of funding might be available?
So rough estimate, budget level estimate for everything in the plan is $100,000. Grants, a lot of the ones that I've seen look like they, they always, they tend to look for a 50% match. So I'm thinking that it's a good project and we'd have a good chance of getting half of that in a grant. There are active transportation grants, safe route to school grants. And we're investigating, well, with, with adoption of this plan, we look into the next round. Not sure, we may need to have the complete street circulation element adopted to be able to go after these grants. And I, I don't think we're in, missing any right at this moment. They'd be upcoming, but we'd, we'd want to pursue that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ray?
Cliffhead, go ahead.
All right. So, yeah, I want to follow up on, on some of the things that, that Laurie had talked about with the school. So the, that last slide, attachment L, yeah, I think it's a good idea to put the shuttle at the, towards the, the intersection with Alvarado. So how often do we have parents that are double parking? Is that like every day type? Okay. Okay. So then, what's the, is there a, a fine for double parking and dropping someone off? Bob?
Yeah, I can't quote that one off the top of my head, but certainly double parking's another parking violation. And, and we're aware that, that that area is problematic in the morning. And, and we do tend to send officers out there on occasion. We're encouraged by our increased staffing that council's allowed that we're going to be able to focus in those areas to greater degrees and move forward. U-turns over the WLO and whatnot. And, and those type of things are moving violations. And, and we hope to address all of those as we move forward with the program.
Okay. And then in, in attachment D, so you have on Glen Parkway, how often is that used for student drop off? Or is it kind of not really used because everyone wants to be on San Bruno, which is, you know, a really busy street because people are using that to get out of town, go to work as well? So, you know, I'm just, you're just thinking of, okay, where are the options where people could, can drop off their kids? And then, and then going back to, and then going to that attachment H. So here we have the entryway into the school and we have parking on both sides. But then if you look at San Benito heading west, that area doesn't have any parking. And I, and I'm assuming that's their property. Potentially you could move the, the spots that are on the school side onto San Benito so that then you could potentially have this as a drop off area as well.
To answer the first part of your question, moving, making the additional drop off on Glen Parkway, what we, what was observed is that there's just not enough space on San Bruno Avenue to accommodate all the parents at once. So if you're able to draw that space out to a longer area, it would leave enough space for people who didn't have to double park to do that. And surprisingly, that area of Glen Park on that side of the street is not used by the residents for parking very much. During the daytime. So it wouldn't impact them to, to do that. But your idea is well taken that there, there might be some potential spots on the San Benito side of the school that we could use to add for staff parking or whatnot if the road was wide enough there.
Yeah, you know, just thinking of, you know, people, you know, coming up San Bruno, they double parking, dropping off their kid. Then they keep, then, then, then they continue going straight out of town. You know, here, if they made the right turn on Glen Park, then they'd have to kind of configure, you know, make a U-turn or whatever to get back to San Bruno. And so.
Around Lake Street, I think was.
Yeah. And so, you know, I really like your suggestion of, of partnering with the school district. I mean, I think this is, that's the next step that needs to happen. And, yeah, and that the city assists the school district in, in trying to come up with the funds to, you know, to pay for a lot of these things. So, but, you know, I, I can't tell from this picture here, but just going off a memory on San Benito Road, it seems like there's enough space in that area along San Benito that you could accommodate some parking if an investment was made to, to level that area out and, and put in the parking spots. Is that, is that correct?
Well, speaking for Karen, she's busy at the moment. Certainly, you know, we'd have to take a look at where the city right of way is there in terms of the road we're with, but it's something worth looking into, definitely.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Ray?
Yeah. No, it, it speaks to, you know, how much it would have cost to, to reconfigure the back parking lot there. And as I recall, that's a substantial slope. So you'd have to be doing grading and, you know, that all costs money. So in order to make all this happen, and, and you're right, Cliff, that, you know, the parents are leaving the kids off in the morning and, and they're in a damn big hurry. And that's why they're doing a lot of ridiculous things, really unsafe things. And part of it is because they're in a hurry to get to work, you know, and get the kids out of here and get out of here, you know. And I heard some of the stories that the members of the Complete Street Safety Committee were telling from their observations, which was just pretty scary. It's amazing what some of the parents, I mean, just sending their kids off, oh, cross the street, go ahead, get ahead or go, you know, cross the street. You know, here's cars going every which way. And here's a, you know, first grader. And you think, oh my God, you know. It's absolutely a miracle that the kid hasn't been hit, you know, at least not seriously, so far as I know. Am I right about that? So the, the problem with the, the idea of, of putting the pickup in the back is that if it's one of those, this is an option, not many parents are going to take it because they're in a hurry. And that isn't a hurry up way to, to, you know, lead the kid off, unfortunately.
The other point of discussion, just to add in there, is that this might be limited to maybe only a certain grade. Wouldn't that might, wouldn't be an either or. This also could be an enhancement to the current condition where certain grades or certain buildings of the school would use it. So we might not have to make a lot of changes to accommodate that certain percentage that would be allowed to use it. So I think there's a lot of good ideas that we could discuss with the school if that's the pleasure of the council.
Absolutely. And, you know, there, there's also the, the, and the report mentions the, the turnaround problems at Lippman too, which has, you know, similar kind of, you know, crazy everyone trying to turn around that little place right there at the top of the hill rather than, you know. to turn around that little place right there at the top of the hill rather than, you know, driving around where it'd be a lot safer. But that requires, I guess, the school to agree to that and so forth. There's a lot of negotiations with the school district that have to happen here to make all this happen effectively. And I'd certainly be in favor of that happening sooner rather than later. The other thing that you were mentioning, that in order to get higher citation charges for the safe street, identified safe streets, it would have to be an ordinance, you know, passed by the council, and I take it that that's something that we could do if we wanted to. Is that my understanding?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because that strikes me as something that, we should have these signs up that say, you know, this is a safe route, we're protecting kids. If you block the sidewalk and force kids to walk in the street, you know, double the fines, you know, something to that effect. You might get somebody's attention, especially after they get the first ticket. And so I, I just think we really need to, to work on whatever is necessary, but I'm also in agreement that, you know, we shouldn't hold anything up. Whatever we can do right away, you know, let's, let's work on the phase in of, you know, what we can do first, because there are some things we can do without even negotiating with the school. There are a number of things we need to negotiate with the school, and then there's a third set of things we need to think more carefully about and need to pass ordinances and so forth. So we just need a strategy of how to move ahead on all of these things. I think the, the committee has done a really incredible job, and it's what we were looking for, and we really want to, you know, support their efforts as quickly and expeditiously as we can, I would think, anyway.
Yes.
So is this something that, with the school district issues, that maybe would be appropriate for the two-by-two subcommittee to discuss?
What do you think? You're on it, right?
You know, I am. I think it is something that, that the two-by-two could discuss with the school district, or, you know, I think the street, the, the Complete Street Safety Committee can also work with the school district, too. So, you know, it, it doesn't really matter to me.
Or we could form sort of an ad hoc committee that's made up of some representatives of each of those.
Well, I mean, I, I think these guys have been doing an awesome job-
Yeah.
-and they made great suggestions, and so-
I agree, but with, with respect to the school district, there's only so much they can do before, you know, it's no longer their property, so.
Yeah, it's about Clay's, oh, Clay, so, why don't you provide some wisdom?
And I think we also want to give an opportunity for the members of the committee to add whatever comments they wish before we, you know, take any action of any kind.
In regards to working with the school district.
Yeah. So I, I think that probably the issue is, is having a representative group from the city that, that has, you know, presents some authority from the city. So I mean, I think certainly the committee has done the work, but I think maybe having a council member or two participate in that conversation, I think, would give the, the necessary sort of imprimatur that the city is behind this and city council wants to see this happen.
All right, now, you know, you're right, that makes sense. So, yeah, probably the two-by-two, but then having, say, a, a member of, of the committee, or if the whole committee wants to-
Maybe the whole committee, yeah.
-you know, to, to the meeting.
Has the school been approached at all regarding the Safe Routes to School program?
Not directly, no. And we, we didn't want to approach the subjects that dealt with the school without having kind of talked to the council first, so not directly. The Mothers of Brisbane have given input on the routes, but not the school directly.
So are there any members of the street's Safe Routes to Street Committee that would like to speak? Come on. You can all come up if you'd like, one by one, and, or in tandem, however you'd like to do it. And thank you so much for your hard work.
Colleen Mackin, and I first want to thank the council for your questions because we were about to jump out of our shoes every time you asked the right questions. And also I'd like to acknowledge Karen Kinser and Commander Meisner because we did a lot of investigative work, and without their assistance, where we came up with our ten-thousandth question, we couldn't have put any of this together as well. But a couple of things, just to start with, and, and it addresses some of the things that you inquired about, is that it seems really simple, take a map, and that's how we started, and then find out where there's sidewalks, and you discover Funky Brisbane doesn't have sidewalks. You'll be going along a road and go, great, this one has lots of sidewalks, and then they stop. So where you mentioned Alvarado, the one side looks great, and then they disappear.
Right.
And your question about why Alvarado, not Klamath, the other thing we did is we really followed, watched the kids. And the kids aren't going to go on Klamath. They go directly to the ES. The other thing is, our concern even approaching this, you think about safe routes for kids, you go, they're kids, you know, they're going to be a little reckless, you want to make sure you get them on a street where you give them the best opportunity to be safe. We started with school crossing guard Bill. We went out there several mornings, and we said, Bill, what should we look at? And he said, sometimes I just, I, I even hate to watch. And we said, oh, no, really? The kids that bad? And he goes, the kids are great. And we said, what? And he said, the kids are really good. And this was contrary to what we thought we were approaching. He was one hundred percent right. The kids were like gold. They're following the rules, they're pushing the crosswalk buttons, they're going in groups together, they're looking both ways. The parents absolutely left us with our jaws dropping. I'll attribute to frenzied society, cell phones, late to work, too much traffic, but I, I'm just, I, I really have to mention a couple of things, and I won't go on and on with this. The biggest problem, I have to be at work, I'm, I'm not going to wait, this bus is here, there's people in the crosswalk, I'm going to go across the double line, and here kids just get out in traffic and run across the road. Or, okay, this says drop-off zone, but I don't trust my kid to walk in, so I'm going to park here anyway, forcing everyone else to double park. And then, think of Brisbane Elementary. It's, if, if you go up that hill, and then you really want to go the opposite direction, you drop your kids off, how do you get the opposite direction? You do a U-turn in the crosswalk with all the kids crossing. And I'm not joking, they do. Pull in driveways, and so we have this massive group of people pulling in driveways and doing U-turns with kids going in across Santa Clara and San Bruno Avenue with shuttles and double parked vehicles, and vehicles going across, around double parked vehicles, across the double yellow line. It's absolutely an accident waiting to happen. We were so horrified. In fact, we went the first time and said, this must be an anomaly. We went back, and we went back, and every time it got worse. So we started making notes. But what we discovered in the process, which maybe hasn't been highlighted, this isn't safe for pedestrians, let alone kids. I didn't feel safe. I was watching my back every time I crossed. So one of the benefits in this whole plan is it can make it safer. You look at near Madhouse, and we look at sidewalks, we're, we found things where we said, wow, this is great, I'd feel better about walking. And it came up over and over where members of the committee would go, I walk that all the time and I just hate it, I end up in the street. And we have blind curves everywhere in town. And thank you, Ray, high rate of speed, you mentioned it, you mentioned it, you mentioned it, over and over. This is an issue. And when you're forcing people into the street with cars at high rate of speed, what do you expect? So one of the things we found is we have glorified parking lots on people's sidewalks, and this is a very, very tough issue. And as a council, you're facing a big hurdle here because people, we, we tried so carefully not to take away their parking, but the sidewalk is their parking. They've said, I've done this for years. They're going to tell you that. I've done this for years, I've parked across my driveway, let them just walk around it. Do you really want them out in the street? So we went back to Commander Meisner, he said, I can enforce it. We said, you know, limited police resources. But he feels confident that with this safe route, the police can handle it. It has to be ongoing enforcement. I think you need to make a very clear directive to help our police department that you want and expect this to be enforced. Not in the first month if you pass it, not for six months or a year, but long-term, because it's not going to go away. And this came up where people said, well, it's always been Brisbane, and it's just the way it is. It's time to reevaluate it. You asked about the school, why, what's the problem with the turnaround in the back? They've always parked faculty there. They have some vans that bring in disabled kids. We asked how many? Two. That's it. So we'd rather have, there, they do have a policy for drop-offs. Their policy for drop-offs is right for Brisbane Elementary on San Bruno Avenue, near Santa Clara. Why they don't do it in the back, because they've always done it there. So we face some hurdles in trying to educate our citizens and the public that some of these things really need to be revisited, especially parking on the sidewalks and the, the U-turns, the double yellow lines crossing it. And the police can't be there all the time. So we need to make a convincing argument to the public why this is necessary and why they should want to embrace it. Because I would not want to be the citizen that hits someone and has to live with that. And it's going to happen unless people's attitudes change. And why now? Because we have more cars. Very simple. More than ten years ago, more than twenty years ago. We have people traveling at a higher rate of speed. They're impatient, they're trying to commute, they're busy. So one other thing I'd like to just also bring up, one of the components, if you had a chance to look over the report, is that we did ask Commander Meisner about school zones. Other communities have school zones. Is that possible? And he came back to us and said, actually, we can. And Karen, if you could address that, because it's something that's indicated in the report about fifteen mile an hour speed limits. To lower that limit, because we said, if, if we could say, you're near this school now, you know, I mean, I know other cities and communities, you go near the school, you go, oh my God, I got to slow down. And we want that to happen, not just for the kids, but for the pedestrians. We want to be, part of Complete Streets is, is to encourage pedestrians. We want everybody to be safe, why not? So Karen, could you please address that?
Sorry, fifteen mile per hour? Yeah, we, we talked about that in the beginning, that we want to make Solano Street from, let's see that better, from, well, the city's property at, at around the Lippman Field, all the way down to Monterey, fifteen miles per hour, and then around BES from San Bruno, on San Bruno from Alvarado up to Tulare, and then on Glen Parkway from San Bruno up to Lake Street, and on San Benito, back to, that's about two hundred feet west of Glen Parkway, that all of that be fifteen mile per hour and signed as such.
So what is the implication in terms of citations if it's fifteen miles per hour versus what it is now? Because it's a school zone, does it make it a higher citation?
Yeah, there's higher fines for, for school zones. And, and just to clarify, the reason that we chose those areas in particular is we're limited to what the vehicle code allows to do. School zone, normally you're used to seeing is twenty-five, that's a thousand feet around a school, but there is a provision in the vehicle code that allows a city engineer to declare an area within five hundred feet around schools as fifteen mile an hour, so we wanted to take advantage of that.
And would that only be in effect, you said, when children are present?
That's right.
And is that when they're actually present or during school hours? I always was wondering what, when children are present actually meant.
Well, I would say during school hours, children are present within that area, so, or at any special event in the evenings.
Special events as well.
Yeah.
And one last thing I just wanted to answer. Lori, you asked about the pickup times at Brisbane Elementary, which is our most congested area, although Lippman does take a, a very good second for the turnarounds in the parking lot there. They have three different dismissal times in the afternoon. I believe it's two, two fifteen, two thirty, and then there are kids that stay after school programs. So it really gets staggered. It's way calmer, but the morning between eight o'clock, eight thirty, it's, go up there sometimes, trust me. So without further ado, and I want to thank our committee because they, they really spent a lot of hours on this, and poured heart and soul. And my apology is only that it took so long, but we, we went beyond. We found just what you asked. It's not, it's not just kids, it's pedestrians, but it's also the traffic. And this is an opportunity to change things and embrace the fact that it's time that we need to look at what we're doing more carefully. So thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, Colleen kind of stole my thunder, but my-
Thank you.
But my, I'm old school, and I feel parents need to take responsibility, they're showing bad behavior. And it's time that they do get cited or talked to or pay attention to what they're doing. I, I don't want any excuses because you're in a hurry, or you got a phone, or whatever. This is really important. It's, it's a small area, and you just have to calm down and back off for a while. So I would like to see a lot more reinforcement, and especially like, well, I, I shouldn't say I, I think we, we discussed it, and like, especially the first day of school, you know, when kids go back and it's really busy, have some cops up there, talk to the parents, and get their heads straight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores.
And just to follow up on Dolores for Commander Meisner, so in terms of enforcement, are you also looking at, you know, if there's parents having their kids jaywalk across San Bruno Avenue, is that part of your enforcement, that you're going to try to, to curb those behaviors as well?
Well, sure. I, you know, we always like to do education and enforcement in these areas, and in the report, without going in, taking more time, there's a, a lot of things that we're going to do beforehand to educate parents and students and make them aware of the program and what good behavior is and bad behavior is. But we're going to back that up with enforcement at some point, which will involve writing citations and speaking with those parents that are doing things that are unsafe for their kids and everybody else.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. Dolores stole my thunder. Actually, what I wanted to point out is when you first look at that purple map that shows the safe streets and all the weird little places, we took into consideration kids not walking past bars, places that were undesirable for them. I loved all the different points that you brought up, and particularly beautifying. And I just want to suggest that you make it very important that we use native species in order to bring them out and closer in, actually, we're on it. So to, if, any plantings that are done would be great if we can afford to do that, if we can get grants. Sierra Point and Humboldt is a nightmare. Sierra Point and Klamath is a nightmare. And I really think we do need to go back and revisit that area and look at what, within the parameters of the law, or if we need to pass a law or an ordinance of some sort to make that whole area safer, because it just goes every which way, and it's the same way at the top of Mariposa at Solano. That's a nightmare and an accident waiting to happen also. I thought there was another spot I was interested in, but I can't remember what it is, but it's been really a pleasure. Our, our discussions have sometime become debates, and we've spent lots of time, and every little part of this has been discussed for hours. So, thank you for listening, and, and please give us more feedback, and it looks like we have more work to do. I'd also like to see it extended out further into Brisbane. Thanks.
Thank you. Just to follow up on what Linda mentioned about, you know, how the committee looked at having the kids not walk past bars and other establishments. I know in our Health and Safety Subcommittee, we had touched on that, and I heard that you were working on it in your committee, so we, we didn't deal with that issue, but I noticed that, you know, it does, the Safe Routes do go down visitation, you know, past the Brisbane Inn and the now-closed twenty-three club. So what, how was that taken into consideration, and what, what was done to mitigate any exposure to youth of people out on the street? to youth of people out on the street doing, you know, some bad behaviors?
Well, it's one of those streets that they're inherently going to use regardless of where we designate. It's the main street downtown that juveniles, kids frequent Julie's to get sodas and whatnot, or midtown to get snacks or whatnot. So I think in terms of avoiding the bars, Mariposa wasn't selected for that very reason, because that area is where people tend to congregate outside the Brisbane Inn. So that, even though it's a small victory, that's one area that we were cognizant of not routing children down. But visitation is one of those that, there's a lot of areas where kids need to go to the library, for instance, on visitation as well. So they're going to be there, so we're going to do the best we can to keep it safe.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. I had one other question about, I think one of the committee members had, I think Colleen had mentioned that people going down San Bruno were driving and parking on the east side of the street, double parking, having their kids run across the street. So did you consider having the no parking zone on the eastern side of San Bruno Avenue as well to assist parents who are driving in the northbound direction and dropping off on that side of the street?
No, because the reason is there are a lot of residences there, and there are a lot of driveways, and there are people that park there that would be, we would be giving up on-street parking to do that during those times.
So what suggestions do you have then for people driving northbound on San Bruno for dropping their kids off? What route would they, or where would they preferably stop?
If they could turn onto Glen Parkway in the extended drop-off area and then loop back around on Lake Street, or if we were using that back parking lot, that's also a great way to get them off.
Okay, so it sounds like there's some education needed for the drivers as well as the pedestrians. Thank you.
Bob, what's the fine for parking in a drop-off zone?
I don't know the top of my head, but historically, most of the parking violations are between $20 and $30.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I mean, that one's a big one. I mean, you know, someone who parks in a spot that's supposed to be for just a drop-off, I mean, like, you know, there's no excuse for that. You know, I mean, I can see a resident, okay, maybe parking in the sidewalk just because of habit, but here, I mean, if it's clearly marked and people know not to park in a white zone during a certain time period, I would be in favor of increasing that fine. And, you know, maybe, you know, through an education process with the school district, and then having, you know, police present on certain mornings just to get it into the minds of the parents, say, you know, "I'd do this or I'm going to get a ticket."
So I had...
Can I speak?
Of course. Dennis Bussie, would you like to come up?
What, when you're through?
Are the committee members done?
Okay. Dennis Bussie, and I lived across the street from Best for 15 years, so I know what I'm talking about, what I'm about to tell you. And I'd appreciate it if you could bring up the slide of Glen Park and San Bruno Avenue. And I want to thank Ms. Kinzer and Commander Bob for fantastic work you guys did. I'm very, very impressed. And I've only got a couple of issues. If it's not on that photograph, is there a photograph going down towards Santa Clara? A slide? What I'm trying to say is, I own a building directly across the street from the entrance to the school. Bingo. There it is, on the right. And I lived in it for probably four years while my other house is being remodeled. My sister was in it for nine or 10 years, and my nephew was in it for three. I had motorcycles there, trailers. I was there all the time and did a ton of gardening. And I'm telling you, men, it'd make the greatest movie to watch mothers dropping off their kids. There's been so many close broadsides, because they turned into my driveway, plus the apartment house uphill from me, and people are coming down Glen Park, people are coming up, mothers are honking each other. It's never a guy that I can get into a fight with, it's always a woman. But I'm telling you, it's a catastrophe. I've witnessed it, and I'm going to say 500 times. And I brought this up before, and one thing that greatly, greatly made it worse was when the city put in a no-U-turn at Glen Park in San Bruno. For years, people would come up San Bruno, drop a kid off at the, either on the right-hand side legally, or at the corner of Glen Park, make a U-turn, it's a huge wide intersection, and go back down San Bruno. Soon as they put the no-U-turn allowed, it became worse. I talked to Hitchcock, who was the tall cop we had here, Dennis, had lengthy meetings with him. Clay was kind enough to type an eight-and-a-half-by-11 letter, it just blew my mind, he took the time to do that, he's busy. So it's been on the books for a long time. My suggestion was, back then, take out that no-U-turn. Let people make a U-turn there. They can also drop their kid off on the right-hand side. They turned into my driveway, as I said, the apartment house, as I said, they've gone over my curb, wiped out the plants that cost me $200 to buy, and have industrial landscaping put in, and I maintain them. And I always was waiting for a parent to come right through my garage door. So a suggestion is to look into taking out that no-U-turn sign. I think that will alleviate a lot of the people illegally making U-turns and whatnot in the middle of the block. You've got commercial trucks that come down and some yo-yo, parents pulling into a driveway after they've dropped their kid off on the wrong side of the road. And the other thing, I don't know if it's legal, you've got a double yellow line. Can't you make it four? Two double yellows? And if people can't see that, then you could really nail them with a ticket. But I like the idea of dropping the children off at the turnaround at the school where I guess the teachers park. That makes a lot of sense. But I'm telling you, from all 15 years of firsthand experience, and it can be a Speedway, I don't care if you've got stop signs or not, there used to be two guys, I hated them, they were on motorcycles, and they would start at the stop sign, and they would do a wheelie from Santa Clara all the way to the hill past Glen Park before they dropped the nose. And when they'd come home, always parallel, they'd be on the front wheel coming down to the stop sign. And it used to kind of bug me, because they didn't have bikes like that when I was younger, I'd be with them. So for what that's worth, it's firsthand knowledge, there's a record of it back to Dennis the Cop, the previous chief, Clay, if he remembers, he's got a lot that he may not remember, but I remember they took the time and courtesy to respond to me. But of course, nothing was done. So you might look into that. Get rid of that no-U-turn sign. Double yellow lines of such a thing, I think I've seen them somewhere. And then get a cop sitting there. You got a couple of new cops, and just let them nail some parents with some heavy fines. Okay? Thank you very much. And signs, if I may, Ms. Liu has a thing about beautifying Brisbane. There's a lot of beauty in simplicity. Plain, simple simplicity. Apple proved it. We have so many signs in this town, and now you're going to put up more, you know, 15 miles an hour and children are on the streets. What about old people like me? I don't count. And if you come up San Bruno, do me a favor, come in off Old Beishore, come up the backway, and count the signs. There are top of poles that you can't even read, they've been illegible for 20 years. There are poles, you know, the galvanized poles, with no signs on them. It's a dump coming in the backway. Yank out, if you put a sign in the ground, you got to take one out. And I'll gladly drive people around and show you where to do it. You can really make the town look better if it looks clean and neat and simple. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other members of the public like to speak? I do have a comment on the U-turn, and I know that coming over Guadalupe Canyon into Daly City, they've got the elementary school at the end.
I pass that every day.
And they have put in a U-turn allowed because they were having so many parents making illegal turns.
But there's so much double parking that it's very dangerous to be in that right-hand lane, because you almost always have to switch quickly to the left lane to avoid a car that's stopped, double parked, to let their kids off at the school. So I see the danger.
But they did make a long area for drop-off and pickup and made a legal U-turn. I don't tend to go there during the school hours at that school. I do go by our BES every morning on my, or virtually every morning about 8:00 a.m. And, you know, I actually get a wave from the crossing guard because I pause long enough to look him in the eyes, because I think that's what you need to do when you arrive at a crosswalk that's going to be busy with children at that hour. And I do see a lot of people, the bad behavior. And it's unfortunate that the people who are doing a lot of the bad behavior were the ones trying to protect their children. And you'd think that there'd be rules that the school had put down or the city had put down about dropping off and picking up, but obviously, that's a difficult thing to enforce, and that's what our job is, doing it here. I did have one question for staff, or one comment, I should say, about the island at Sierra Point and, or, excuse me, on Humboldt and Solano. It seems that the earlier safe route to school flashing sign with the multi-language crossing at, near Julie's on visitation was overconstructed and has caused more issues to vehicles, not necessarily to pedestrians, but for vehicles, and it's hard to see in the dark. I think it's caused more problems. And the signage was, is so annoying that, you know, when I first saw it, my, I just couldn't believe we'd installed something like this, and that we felt we needed to put something that massive to give people the sense of doing what's right. So I'm glad that this plan doesn't look nearly as intrusive, and I don't see a lot of flashing lights and glitz and things like that, because it does worry me about the island creation, that we would cause the same kind of traffic impediments and overbuild it. So I'm glad that we're sort of looking at this as a phase in, find out what's worked, see what doesn't before we do a massive building program.
And actually, just to follow up on that, you know, maybe, because, you know, Dennis has a good point about wanting to beautify our town, and like you said, Terri, you don't want to overkill and kill our small-town feel, I'm wondering if with these medallions, if there's some way to put some artistic flair into it, maybe have them in the shape of stars, like Brisbane stars, so that the kids can follow the stars to school. Not too Hollywood, but, you know, more Brisbane.
I'm glad that the medallions are based in the sidewalks and weren't meant to be, you know, signs and lights and flashing all over town, because I think that, I think education's the important thing, not the signage.
I didn't intend to, Dennis Bussie, Brisbane resident, 35 years, but I've been coming here for 70 years. In regards to that island by the Julie's and the Brisbane Inn, it's a killer. It's the stupidest thing I've ever seen. I guess, I'm a war baby, and I was the crossing guard in grammar school, I had a uniform, I'll find pictures to bring you, and I marched my four guys to the four intersections. Two streetcars ran past us with the overhead wires. Don't we give our kids any common sense? We have to have signs and islands and flashing lights and multiple languages? Christ, let a few kids get killed and then do something about it. But I don't know how many people have ruined their front ends making a turn on that intersection, not seeing that stupid island and knocked their front suspension out. And plus, you push the button, and it talks to you, and it flashlights in the street, none of them work. And I'll never forget Randy Bro saying, "Well, it didn't cost us anything, we got the money for nothing." BS, man, it's still our money. And there should have been some input before that ugly thing went in. I'd take it all out, and let's see if kids don't have some common sense crossing the street. But it is a hazard, it looks like hell, our main street looks disgusting. I brought up years ago, in fact, Mr. Mayor over there did something about it, the building next to the Brisbane Inn was plywood boarded up. And you may recall, I said, "Spend $10 and at least paint the plywood and put, you know, make the building look occupied, not look like a dump in the jungle next to it." And I see Ray came through and took care of that. You've got to, first impressions are lasting. And if you come in the backway of Brisbane and see poles with no signs, or you see poles and a sign you can't read, that's, doesn't speak well. And my background's in graphic arts design and point of purchase and sales. And I still believe, try to make it look neat and clean, even if everything's empty and we're broke. It's like, you don't have to dress like a slob, try to at least look neat, even if you're broke. But that intersection, I think, by the Brisbane is ridiculous. And if the lights don't work, and, oh, by the way, there used to be a bench outside the bar, and the usual locals are in the bar, are sitting out there, and I asked them a few times, "You ever see any kid push the button?" Not a one said they saw a kid push a button. They still crossed the street as if they weren't there. So give that some thought, too, for the beautification of nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray?
So I, if I may, I'd try to craft a motion. That's your pleasure.
I think that would be nice. Are we...
I thought I'd try something and let, you know, our staff and the committee give us feedback as to whether we're articulating it correctly, because I was going to go down the same line of thinking that I had earlier and move that, the council approve moving ahead with those recommendations of the committee for the Safe Streets Program, Safe Streets to School Program that we, that the city has control over. And whatever work the staff needs to do to, you know, make that happen, and there are probably some things that need to be priced out and so forth, and all of that work that the staff needs to do to get us ready to move ahead. And then secondarily, to, you know, begin, set up the process of negotiating with the schools, to work on those things that involve their cooperation. And then third, you know, look at whatever else seems to be appropriate as the next step, such as ordinances with the citation increases and that kind of thing. Look at that as kind of a separate item for the future enforcement. Anyway, that's my motion. Does that kind of capture it? Did I get...
That's what we were going for, and specifically on the first ones that the city can work on.
Right.
With a grant application, typically, we need a council resolution to participate and spend the money as needed, so that would come back to you.
Right.
To actually install anything.
This motion basically requests that you do exactly that.
Yes.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and thank you so much to the committee.
Good job, you guys.
And to staff for doing such a thorough job with this. Thank you.
Very thorough.
Super.
Excellent.
Keep looking at which agenda I had. So that would bring us to old business, item A, the report from the Economic Development Workshop. And I think that we should take a five-minute break so that we can come into that fresh and take a little stretch. And if that's okay.
Good idea.